Reconvened from closed session. Madam Clerk, roll call again. Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne. Here. Any action to report out from closed session?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item listed on the agenda, which was significant exposure to litigation in two cases. The council discussed the two cases, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Now if you'll rise and join me for the invocation, Pastor Kathleen Puntar. Are you here this evening? I do not see her. I do, however, see Brian Haltermann. Might he want to give us a brief invocation?
I couldn't hide back there?
No, thank you.
Yes. Dear Lord, we come to you and we just thank you for this city that you've given us. We thank you for just the beauty of what we live in and that we've been able to see these past few days in this city. We thank you for the people and their hearts, the hearts of compassion, the hearts of hope, and the hearts of help. And tonight, Lord, as we gather together, as we talk, Lord, give wisdom to these men and women sitting on our city council. Give them wisdom, give them guidance, and give them the courage to make those difficult decisions that they're called on to make in, day in, day out. Let us continue to be that city that radiates hope, that radiates help, and radiates compassion in all we do. And we just give it all to you in your glorious name. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, that we would appreciate you putting any of your cellphones on either vibrate or turned off, and that if you wish to speak on an item, you can do so at the oral communication before the general agenda, or you can do so during that agendized item, and that consent calendar items should be discussed during that first oral communications for the consent items. We had a presentation at the Martin Luther King Junior Day 2019 that I presented as a proclamation. There have been no other proclamations presented, and we don't have one this evening. City Manager, report at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a few different items. The first one is there is currently a citizen's survey that is open, and a link is on the city's homepage. It's a very short survey, maybe seven to 10 minutes to do the survey. It's going to allow the citizens to inform the council of what they feel is most important in these next two years for the city. Survey would be open until February 22nd, so please, if we can get as many people out on that system and going in and checking the boxes, clicking what they prefer, but also give us your written statements. There's a couple areas in there that allow you to write instead of just picking a box. Put in what you feel. That actually is very beneficial to us. Once this is closed after the 22nd, then we'll start compiling all the surveys, and these surveys will then be given to the council and the public for the goal-setting session, which, I'll roll into the second one, is going to be Saturday, March 9th, 2019. It's going to be here in the council chambers. It'll be similar to what we did for the financial update back in December. It'll begin at 8:30. We'll have coffee and some light snacks to munch on, and then the program will begin at 9:00 a.m. It's currently scheduled to go to 12:00 p.m., but as we go through it, if we haven't come to a point where it's over, it might go a little bit longer than 12:00, but we'll schedule the 9:00 to 12:00 as being the meeting and hopefully be done at that point. I just want to, I've been in some councils where it goes longer than a few hours. I'm hoping that we can continue as we did when the December 8th meeting, get the citizens out here to come out and talk to everybody to give us their input on what they would like to see as goals for the city going forward. April 4th will be the state of the city. This is going to be held at the Dewey Center, and it's going to be sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. We will have more information as we get closer to it, but that'll give another opening and opportunity for the citizens to see what we've done, what we've accomplished, and what challenges we have ahead of us. Another one, I've asked staff to work on creating a new RFP for the demolition of the old pool building. I'd like to ask council if they'd like to bring it back as a staff report, such as the history, current status of the building, and then any of the updated costs of the proposed demolition. I need sort of a...
If I could interrupt, City Manager. Councilmember Mosby owns property across the street from the pool, so he needs to recuse himself from this discussion and leave the room.
Can I ask one question first before I go? Not about the pool, but about something mentioned earlier about the survey.
Oh, yes.
And I notice there's notices around about the survey. I noticed that they, are we doing anything bilingually? Is there anything in Spanish? Any notices going out that way? Is the survey also referenced...
That is a good point. Let me ask staff, and I'll find out, but if we're not, we'll get on that.
All right, thank you.
So the current question before council is if we would like to have a proposal brought back regarding the history and the current condition and potential demolition for the old municipal pool building. So we need a majority support for that?
Yes.
That's one.
Yes, I'd like to see a proposal for a movement toward a new estimate of what it would take to take it down. I think most people know about the history.
I would support that. Looks like you have unanimous support, because I agree.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Mosby, you may rejoin us.
And my last one is asking council for direction on the MOU or grant for the motorsports park. Question would be, do you want the staff to bring back a staff report updating the council, again, on the history, current status, what's needed to move forward? Also, I'd like to ask, should we do come back at that time with a staff report, for the councils to give me what the work priorities would be, as we're almost 30 people short in the general fund at this point in time, and we have lost three key people who would have been assigned to this task. So I'll just need to know if we continue to move forward on current projects, or to reprioritize to fit the motorsports project into the queue. We can't discuss that part right now. That'll be at the next discussion, but it's really, do you want me to bring back a staff report on the MOU, the status of it, what needs to be done, and so forth?
Wouldn't the attorney be the one that would address the MOU?
The MOU and what needs to be done with the MOU, or what could be done with the MOU, can be addressed in the staff report if the council would like us to bring that staff report back.
Like I say, we don't probably have the staff here to do it, but we do have the attorney. I know that the MOU was stopped, but the basis of the stoppage may have been a little questionable, so...
Oh, are you asking if there is not sufficient city staff to handle, work on the MOU? Could the city attorney's office...
Well, if the attorney would be the one that would go ahead and discuss the MOU and reinitiating it.
Yes, the city attorney's office can do that.
I would support it, then.
Councilmember Mosby.
I would support it.
Do we have a third or a fourth? Seeing none, there is not a request to have that brought back? Any additional comments or reports from the city manager?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to the consent calendar. The public comment on consent calendar is regarding items 1 through 4 this evening. If you have a comment that you'd like to make, please step forward. Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring the consent calendar back to council. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. This will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from council consent calendar for a separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Is there an item anyone would like to pull? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar as stated.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Any discussion? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Seeing no staff presentations or announcements requests listed, we'll move on to the first oral communications. This is a three-minute maximum. If there is something that you would like to step forward and speak to us on, please do so now.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. Please archive the council meetings, dates, agenda, minutes, and videos to be easily accessed by the public as they had been prior to our new leadership. Transparency exposes the business model. Please fix that. Lompoc population has decreased each of the last three years. More businesses have closed. A window was opened into the inner workings of City Hall at the last council meeting. We learned a city employee followed a plumbing truck 20 blocks to the job, paced back and forth outside the home, told the homeowner a permit was needed to replace a water heater, red-tagged the job, and suggested an arrest may be an outcome. But the worst was yet to come. Instead of merely reminding the citizen, specific names of employees are not appropriate in a public forum, the citizen was mocked from the dais. It was suggested complaints should go to the department, the city manager, or individual elected officials. The Lompoc citizen at the microphone is your boss. The citizen is the reason this body exists. He should have been graciously thanked for his testimony. Citizens have questions for you. How did this city know in advance of the work? Are certain compliant businesses required to report purchases that may lead to union work and city engagement? Are some plumbers preferred by the city cabal over others? Why was this citizen harassed and made aware that the city employee had law enforcement background? If the plumber knew more about the installation than the city inspector, why would you need a permit? On a similar note, the new Veterans Memorial in Beatty Park is all roped off. No one can get near it. Why? It's brand-new and all permits were obtained. This smells. We have some dedicated city personnel, but others need to go. Previously, I had suggested an FBI investigation, but as we have witnessed abuse of Air Force Base students forced out of Lompoc schools, base personnel assuming they're not embraced in our city, and now the lovely Veterans Memorial made inaccessible, I suggest military intelligence look into the inner workings of this small town, whose leader discourages complaints in the public forum and video archive have been buried. Let us move this city from darkness to light. I have copies of the methodology of tyranny for some of you, and Stacy could make more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forget to put my name. I don't know how to follow that. I'm going to do my best. My name is Jeremy Ball. I'm a, I'm going to come from a concerned citizen's point of view tonight. I'm going to take as little time as possible. True story, about two and a half, three weeks ago, about a block away from where I live, which is close to Walnut and L., on Chestnut and L., there was a shooting. I should have been paying a lot more attention to crime as an issue when it was several blocks away from my house. I didn't. But obviously, a block away from my house at 11:15 in the morning, about 45 minutes before kids walked through there from high school, definitely got my attention. The thing that concerns me the most is that we have a understaffed police department, and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to fix that problem anytime soon. It also looks like we don't have a plan for, it sounds like either this year or next year, Santa Maria is going to add 20 positions, I've heard, in their police department, and I would not be surprised, and many people would not be surprised, if we lost some of the officers that we've trained with our taxpayer dollars to another city that pays them better and treats them better. I'm concerned about public safety. If we don't make sure that that is our number-one priority, number one, I know our budget's in a mess, I know that there's a lot of struggles and interest, but if public safety falls apart, economics in all the other areas aren't going to improve either. We know that. If we let it fall apart and someone says, hey, maybe the county can just take it over, they can do a better job, I'm not convinced of that, because Santa Barbara County has not put Lompoc at the top of their priority for decades. So we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our citizens, we owe it to our kids, we owe it to our future, that we find a way to fund vacancies and make sure that the police department is fully staffed so that crime doesn't get out of hand. It's very important that we focus on this. Thank you.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor Osborne and to the city council. I was here at last month's meeting, and I actually brought up two subjects, and one was on rent control, capping off rent. The other one was based on finding employment, or when blacks did apply for employment. Here in the city of Lompoc, that there seemed to be some type of issue with that, where there is not even a handful of blacks here that are working in this city. I myself work in Santa Maria. So I wanted to come back to you to get an update, get some status as far as what was mentioned in last month's meeting. I have some bullet points here, and it states that certain groups of people most often assure that their race gets hired. Blacks are rarely hired in this city. Blacks should be given the opportunity as well. Our city is segregated between the blacks, Hispanics, and the whites. There is racism in this city. Why are we so segregated? Why is there so much jealousy, envy, resentment, bitterness, hate? One race thinking they are better than another race? We all bleed the same. What can city council do or say to ensure that blacks can get hired in this city? And from our last meeting, I say blacks are hired at the base, Santa Maria, Santa Barbara. So I would like to see if you've pondered and have came up with a resolution on how we can do better in our city. Rent control, what can be done to cap off rent? So many people are struggling. The rich get richer, the poor get poorer. We need to have a more better and amazing quality of life here in the city of Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you.
A little bit confused at the moment. Here primarily as co-chair of the Motorsports Group. We had a going MOU last December. It was tabled, or however, I don't know. My interpretation of the MOU is it goes with the life of the project, and simply stopped the MOU, not the project. So I think the project is still alive. I believe some reasonable facsimile of now Mayor Osborne's comment was, the exact motion is to terminate the current MOU, give them their notice, and begin negotiations on a new MOU with a 90-day report, as long as there's going to be, and if we need to set a timeline or any additional discussion at times. Okay, so we didn't have much to go on. We found out that the grant cycle is coming up again. We went down to the grant program, took the two-day course, found out that if we were going to apply for a new grant, that it has to be in by March 4/59, on March the 4th. So we brought back a book for the city just about a month ago, and proceeded to contact the city manager to get time to sit down with him and get this thing rolling again. That didn't happen. I came over yesterday, set up an appointment with the mayor and city manager, and was graciously accepted. I figured I'd get a time later, but they said, well, just hold on a minute, we'll talk with you. And I made this comment. So I think you've been very, very unfair, or three of you are very unfair tonight to motorsports. We were told we'll come back and work on an MOU. One of the things we were concerned about is the money. It was an issue last time. The foundation, or the Motorsports Group has a lot of, a certain amount of money to go out and pay for a grant, to write this new grant. So the only thing the city would have to do is work with that person to file it. State Park says it will not, contract will not be with the foundation, it has to be with a lead agency, which is the city. So you've turned your back, basically, on our program. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we will close the oral communications and move on to appointments. We have council appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. The first committee that we have openings are, is the Economic Development Committee. There's one associate position ending February 2020. There are two associate terms ending February 2022. There are two at-large positions ending February 2022, and those may be nominated by either Councilmember Starbuck or Councilmember Vega. And there is one at-large position ending 2020 that can be nominated by Member Cordova. We have three applicants. The first is Brittany Skinner, the second is Rebecca Ingram, and the last is Chelsea Cochran. Does anyone have an appointment they would like to make from this name list? Councilmember Starbuck.
I would like to appoint Chelsea Cochran.
All right. I'll second that. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Any other council member want to choose? If not, I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Brittany Skinner and Rebecca Ingram to the two associate position terms ending February 2022.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The next committee commission is the Library Commission. It has one term ending January 2021, and we have an at-large applicant in Ron Stasi, who has, currently serving and would like to serve again. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and nominate Ron Stasi to the Library Commission.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The next committee commission is the Planning Commission. We have one term ending 12/2020 for Member Cordova. We have one term ending 12/22 for Councilmember Starbuck, and one term ending 12/2022 for Councilmember Vega. Councilmember Starbuck.
I would like to nominate Nicholas Gonzalez.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Member Cordova.
I do have a nomination. My applicant was not able to get his application in on time because I was out for a week and a half. But I would like to nominate this person, and then they will put in their application. That would be Mr. Ron Fink.
City clerk or city attorney, is that appropriate? I see a head nod from our city clerk.
Yes. The municipal code, we do follow this application procedure, but in the municipal code, it is not a requirement that an appointee submit an application.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do I have a second? I will give you your second. Any discussion? All right, so we have two for yes, two for no, and one abstain.
So the appointment is not successful, and any council member, or Councilmember Cordova or Councilmember Vega can continue to appoint others if they would like tonight or at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vega, do you have an appointment you would like to make?
I'd like to appoint a new member to the Planning Commission, Ms. Sasha Keller.
I will second that.
And Ms. Cordova has seconded that. Any discussion? Let's vote. That is 5-0 pass. Ms. Cordova, before we move on, would you like us to consider another nomination or bring this back at another time when Mr. Fink has filed his application?
If we could bring it back. Sorry. If we could bring it back, that'd be great, and then that'll give me a chance to consider out the other applicants as well.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the Utility Commission. We have one term ending 12/22 for Councilmember Starbuck, and one applicant is Robert Dunlap. Councilmembers...
I would be honored to nominate Robert Dunlap.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember? Okay. Then let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. In our council committee internal appointments, we, unfortunately, it wasn't on the list, so we need to backtrack and make sure we have correct appointees for the western area of the San Ynez. of the San Ynez River Valley groundwater basin. And the first question is, council member Mosby is currently appointed to that, and would you like to remain as the council appointee?
Yes.
All right. And Mr. Wilkie, do you have staff in mind as an alternate?
Currently, the position that used to be that alternate has retired, so until we find a replacement for that person, I will be the alternate. Or I propose being the alternate.
Okay. I need a second on those motions.
Second.
I've got a second. All right. Me, when I asked council member Mosby if he'd like to remain and got an affirmation. So now let's vote. And that is 5-0. All right. That concludes our appointment process for this evening. Our next agenda items are council requests. Number seven is review and discussion of current requirements for grease traps requested by council member Mosby, and I believe our utility director Brad Welke is up.
Sorry to interrupt, but I need to jump in here to explain a few conflict of interest items. So on this item, we're discussing the city's requirements for grease traps and grease interceptors in restaurants. And I've talked with a few of the council members about some of the financial interests they have in this matter. Council member Mosby is the owner of property and landlord for a few restaurants in town that are required to have grease interceptors or grease traps under the city's codes. Council member Cordova has an ownership interest in a business in town that has a restaurant required to have a grease trap or a grease interceptor. The standard for those two council members is whether the decision or discussion tonight may have, may cause a change in the value of those businesses or cause a change in their publicly traded stock price. And I've come to the conclusion, and in my opinion, that the impact of the grease trap discussion tonight is not severe enough to have that sort of an impact. Therefore, council member Mosby and council member Cordova can participate tonight. Council member Starbuck is landlord to a business in town that also is required to have a grease trap and grease interceptor under the city's codes. The business that council member Starbuck is the landlord for has a current pending enforcement action against it for grease trap, grease interceptor violations. Therefore, under the FPPC regulations, that's a different situation. And because of that, I'm recommending that council member Starbuck recuse himself due to that potential conflict of interest tonight.
Council member Starbuck.
I will recuse myself.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne, council members. There is a staff report that was prepared for this item, and I'm sure that many items here are reiterations of discussions we've had. So I'm not going to read through it verbatim, I'm not really good at that. So I'm just going to point out some highlights that I think are pertinent to this. And one thing that is in the back of my mind, one of the things I've learned in government is the newspaper headline rule, which basically says if what you're doing right now is going to show up in the headline in the paper tomorrow, how do you want it to look? Is it something that you want to have there? Or is it something you don't want to have showing up? So that's always in the back of my mind, related to my personal activities, but it's also, in this case, I think is going to be pertinent later on. One of the questions about the item that came up was why are we addressing these few food establishments now and we haven't done in the past? So there's a few things why that occurred. At the bottom of the page of, page one of the staff report, we mentioned that we recently had a audit done by the EPA, and during that audit, they recommended that we do a survey of all our food establishments to find out what they have. So that survey was done. What we found out was the vast majority of the food establishments, establishments in town do have either interceptors or grease traps, roughly 80% of the 134 or so businesses in town. So that way, that left about 24. So of those 24, surveys were obtained from them or requested from them in that process to try to identify what those food establishments did. And in those, in that process of the 24... Am I saying that right? 28. I said 24, I meant 28. Of those 28, now after contacting, coordinating with the various businesses, we only have four that have not yet either stepped up to actually install their interceptors or their grease traps, or at least coordinated with the pretreatment official at the wastewater plant to begin the process. Of those four, one was recently closed by the Santa Barbara County Environmental Health Department for sewer overflows, which was in part caused by their lack of a grease interceptor or grease trap. So that one will be taken care of, their grease interceptor is part of the requirement for the environment health to allow them to reopen. So that leaves just three out of the 28 and three out of the 134 that we're attempting to work with. So having said that, going backwards, one of the questions was, why are we enforcing this now and we hadn't done in the past? And one of those is something we can't answer. We don't know why during the building inspection process for these permits when they were first originally installed, why a grease trap or grease interceptor was not required at that point in time. Had that process been more fully vetted at that point in time, we probably wouldn't be standing here today because all 134 establishments would have some sort of interceptor to address this issue. But I go back to the EPA audit that was just done last year. Another question was, how come you didn't do it way back when? The audit we had was just last year, so their recommendation was for us to do this. That's why, that was a change from what had been done in the past when we had various pretreatment operators have... The pretreatment operators that we have had in the past, there's been significant lapse of time when that position was vacant. So we've not had a consistent program that was being monitors all year round, every year. There was one, before the, the current person that was here, we had almost a two-year gap between people in that position. So it, it has to do with both the EPA and the lack of a consistent person in that person, in that position to do the work. One thing that I'd like to point out is we have every five years a MPDES permit, which stands for National Pollution Discharge, which we have to have to operate our plant. That's once every five years. We had to go through that process when we were redoing our plant. And the last permit we had, which we're still operating under, but technically expired on July, in July of 2017. The state water board is working on reviewing our permit and is, has indicated that we'll probably be getting the conditions of the new permit in a relatively short amount of time, probably the next two or three to six months. One of the things that they mentioned, and I'll bring this up, I'll just mention the letter, the email that came to us from the water board, and I'll just read out what Peter von Langen mentioned to the wastewater group. He said, "The pretreatment requirements..." "The pretreatment requirements start on page 21 of the MPDES permit and state, 'The discharges shall continue to implement enforced approved POTW pretreatment program. Changes that weaken a program or standard are not allowed under backsliding rules in the MPDES permit. There are several sections of permit, NPR, et cetera, that deal with the three pretreatment program requirements required by federal state law under the MPDES permit. Violations of the permit could incur both minimum mandatory penalties and/or discretionary penalties,' regards Peter." The reason I brought that up is I get back to my original statement about the newspaper headline. I fully support what our wastewater pretreatment and wastewater group is doing to ensure that we have a safe, secure system. And once we get our permit, and it may very well likely have stricter requirements than our current permit, I, I don't want to have a newspaper headline that says, "The brand-new utility director allowed the city to violate the permit and incurred possibly between $3,000 and $10,000 penalties to the city on a daily basis until, until those violations were resolved." I understand the need to have a fair process for our commercial establishments. I've personally went out and talked to some of the vendors, some of the businesses that had been asked to put systems in. Two or three of them are very happy to show me the system, how it worked. They were very complimentary of the staff that, that they worked with to get that. I have a couple of emails to that effect. I've talked to one of the plumber installers that had done work on a couple of installations here in town and had also had good conversations about the pretreatment process and how that process worked. So having said that, I know there's a few questions, there are a few points that have been made about the plumbing code, but I'm going to refer back to the fact that I don't want to put the city in jeopardy with a potential violation of our permit. And the permit is the overriding item that the state board looks at. So we could, you could, as a body, make a finding that we don't want to do as much enforcement as being done by the wastewater group, but that has to be reported to the water board. And the water board has already indicated that they're not looking for us to backslide on keeping our permit out of violation. And they've also indicated we'll probably have stricter permits, a stricter permit once the new permit is issued. So with that, I'll stop and answer questions as best I can.
Council member Mosby.
When, when you went out and did all the inspections and notice of violations and stuff, and requesting the 28 businesses to install, was it just based because they were a restaurant, or did you have true findings of fact to justify asking for the requirement? Other than just being a restaurant, I mean, I did...
In our SSMP, which is our sewer system management plan, it has a section on our FOG element, which FOG stands for fats, oils, and grease. I think grease, yes. And in there, it talks specifically about food, what's it say? FSE. And FSE in, in this document talks about food service establishments. So that's why we're addressing only restaurants right now. There are other components of it. You had met, you and I had talked about, what about wineries? That's something that wastewater has said they will address as a separate project, but we're not addressing that right now until this is taken care of.
I guess, again, I'll ask the question again. So did you base this on findings of fact, or did you just go and blanket all the restaurants and say, "All restaurants are going to have to have it"? Whether you truly need one or not, are you just going to make all restaurants have this? Is that, is that what your determination was?
Well, the FOG Control Device section in, on page 83, it says, "The wastewater ordinance requires all FSEs to install approved FOG discharge control devices."
And in, in some cases, some of the restaurants, I'll take it that you didn't, you just took it a blanket case. And the reason why I break this down this way is, is you have a code 1316370 that says, "If you're containing excessive amounts of grease, then it's required." If, if they're obtaining, they have that. I mean, it's what, what our code does say. State law states that you have to have fixtures or equipment that produce grease-laden waste. Now laden means pretty much full. It doesn't mean maybe you've got mayonnaise on a butter knife. And that's why I asked this. I mean, if you had truly findings of fact, grease interceptor is a fabulous item. I, I agree with that. But what I believe the slippery slope you're going down is currently right now, we're hitting these restaurants just because they're restaurants. Whether the, and what I've heard, you don't really have findings of fact on, on, on all of them, saying, yes, you are causing the issue. But the other thing, what I believe you're going to is next is tasting rooms, next it's apartment complexes, and next it's down the line. I know state law doesn't mandate on there, but that doesn't mean that we can't modify ours. And the people paid for $105 million facility to do some of this processing already. And I just hate going down a slippery slope. I back you 110% if you have a finding of fact that says they need it. You know, there's an opportunity for this. But because somebody has mayonnaise on a butter knife, it is stretching it. And when you put an interceptor in a system that doesn't really need it, they, they can be very burdensome if they're not getting a properly serviced or if they're not need it, if they're not need it. You don't, it, it is a financial burden on the people. There's an annual inspection, or maybe quarterly, maybe monthly. We don't really know how far that's going to go yet. At $180, I believe, was the recommendation for the inspection. So I mean, I back you 110% if there's a finding of fact. The other question I have for you...
So can I ask you something?
Sure.
When you say a finding of fact, are you saying that we have to find grease in line for us to be able to enforce this?
Well, I'm just saying what, if you go by what it says here, you want to protect the wastewater system from liquid waste containing excessive amounts of grease. So if, if the facility has equipment, it also states in here with, the state law says that if you're receiving drainage from fixtures or equipment that produce grease-laden waste located in areas of establishments where food. So if you have this, then you're supposed to go to that. If a place has a butter knife with mayonnaise on it, I don't think it, it meets either one of those levels.
So one of the things I was talking to about this issue is grease is kind of like plaque in your arteries. You don't get it from eating one piece of pizza. You get it from having that, something like that over many, many years. So when you're talking about grease-laden, my concern, again, is the system and the potential penalties we're getting from the NPDS permit, which cite all the things you just cited, but it's more burdensome than those. So I think we also had a conversation about make it common sense. We can, we can do that at this level. You guys can do this level, and we might be able to say, yes, a one butter knife every three weeks is not going to be laden, but that may not be what the state water board decides. So we, by making a finding that says, yes, this particular one business doesn't need it because of the X, Y, and Z, we have that burden and we have that risk. And the other thing is that, I mentioned, we had 134 businesses that we identified as food serving establishments. When you mentioned the, the example of one butter knife of mayonnaise, we have several businesses out there that do prepared food to have very little... we have several businesses out there that do prepared food to have very little that probably fit that definition. Almost all of them already have interceptors from the point when they did their tenant improvements. Is your recommendation to go to all of them and take those out?
No, I'm not even on that point. I just referenced basically our ordinance and state law that references grease-laden fixtures. And I think we're overstepping our bounds. If you have a finding of fact, some of these businesses have been established for 30-plus years and they haven't had, I mean, or have they had? If you have that finding of fact, I support you. But the other question I have is, when you approached the people, the businesses, did you identify the appeal process to them?
We could have done a better job of putting that into the notice. So, the notice doesn't necessarily technically have to be include that. But we could have done a better job of doing that.
So, you didn't submit, because they have, what, 15 days to appeal to you, right? And then if they don't like that, they have 10 days to appeal to council. Is that correct?
There was information in there that talked about the appeal process, but it may not have been as voluminous as it could have been to explain every single detail of how it was done.
That's all I'm trying to get at with this, is try to help us do better that we have this. Because I know there is frustration out there. And understanding that, you know, some of the people, they're going to do it, their government's told them. But if it's something that's excessive, and you did send a survey out, I believe, to the tasting rooms as well, right? Didn't the tasting rooms get a survey?
That very well could be, but we're addressing one group as one project first.
Well, they've been surveyed as well. So, I think they are going down that slope, and I'm just wondering what's next. And if we have, if we have a definite finding of fact, completely support it.
So, I go back to the EPA saying that they suggested we do an audit. And that's what that, what those surveys were for. I don't believe the EPA would have asked us to do a survey if they didn't expect to find something that the audit would find that they would want us to correct.
Any additional questions from Mr. Wilkie? Councilmember Cordova.
I agree with what Councilmember Mosby is saying. I think that if our approach as a city is that we want to be a business-friendly city, I think that we owe it to our residents and our business, our local businesses, to approach them in a manner where we try to educate them or let them know the reasons why we are now coming to do something that hasn't been required of them to do in the past 20, 30 years. And so, if we take that approach and we're able to give them resources, then we really, truly become that business-friendly city then. And I understand, Mr. Wilkie, I'm not attacking you in any way, because I know that you're coming on to this position. But my sentiment would be that, that if we are a business-friendly city, that we begin to act like a business-friendly city in giving business owners, whether they're large business owners, which we know they know the requirements. But then you have the smaller business owners that maybe perhaps don't know, and they've never been asked for one. And after 20 or 30 years, someone's coming in and saying, "You're going to need to put that in, or we're going to shut you down." Then that becomes, you know, that's not the best approach. So, I think by you saying that, you know, we could have had a better approach, I think that is the biggest, you know, lesson to be learned here, that we need to do a better job of approaching our business owners, especially when we have issues with them and being able to support them and give them the resources they need.
Councilmember Vega.
Pretty well versed on the grease interceptors as being a former restaurant owner. So, I understand that grease is not just fats and things that are derived from oil and grease. I mean, it can come from vegetables, lactose. There's many derivatives of oil that I can see that we want to protect ourselves from. I think our approach and the messenger probably, that our message, the way it's relayed and portrayed, just as Councilman Cordova explained, is where we're lacking here in this city and where we could do a better job. I think that probably our business owners being with the businesses that have come across, that are doing business in Lompoc, they're pretty sensitive, these smaller businesses that are getting approached. I think they're the ones that are the most hypersensitive. And I think that, once they're educated and once there's a process to show them if, to be in compliance, that there's maybe a painless way of being compliant, I think that's another option maybe the city could take a look at.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because there's quite a number of businesses that were contacted that have been working with Katrina to find a way to do it. One example is, there's a business in town that their lease is up in two years. They haven't had a grease interceptor or a grease trap. Katrina worked with them, and they understand what the need is for. Their simple request was, can we wait and put it in during our busier time where we have a little bit more cash flow? And that was certainly something that was accommodated. And that was, there was more than one instance where that was provided for. So, I think they have been working with the customers, the businesses, to try to address concerns such as that. And if I can, I actually have a letter from one of the contacts that the pretreatment division made. I probably should find out from them that they're okay with disseminating it. But it was an email to the city about how well-treated they were, the fact that it was very professional, the contact was very professional. They liked that they were given the pointers of what was needed to be improved. And from my understanding, that business has been contacted by others to find out how their experience was. So, I think, granted, there was, there could have been a more friendlier version of the letter that went out. But the personal contacts have been made, there's been quite a number of back and forth that, say, you can get by with a little bit smaller system. You might want to talk to some of the other people that have put them in, so you can get an idea which plumbers might be easier to work with. All those kinds of things that various people have been either contacting directly with wastewater or amongst themselves, so.
I agree with you, Brad, but I still think that a business here in the city is bringing in revenue also. It's revenue generating, so it's a handshake as far as our approach. Sometimes our approach, if you come up and you're rude, people get defensive. If you're not rude, and I'm not saying that's what's happening, but everyone reacts a little different. A $1,000 hit to someone that's barely making it could be devastating when maybe they could be presented with a way that maybe $25 every quarter or something could be a way of purchasing something and being in compliance. I think that would be a better way of approaching the businesses, so they could think, know that we're business-friendly, because it is a handshake. Everyone that comes into the city of Lompoc is here to do business, and the long-term return is that we get revenue in the city. So, every time a business leaves, the city does lose revenue. So, it's not just a one-time hit, just for compliance.
Yeah, regarding the question about the, having some sort of payment plan, most of the entities that were addressed have already purchased their interceptors. And that's roughly $260 if it's the size that most of them were deemed to need. The bigger expense is the plumber, which probably isn't something we can bill and then reimburse for. But that, the range in plumber bills can go 25, 35, 45% difference from one to another. So, it's in the business's best interest to go get a couple bids. So, we've seen some that were probably maybe twice, two, three times the amount of the actual interceptor to install. And we've seen some that were four or five times the interceptor cost to do the install. So, there's a, there's a big range there where they might be able to get some benefit from that, reaching out.
Thank you. I think that the total cost would be good to have a range instead of the $260, which is just for the part.
Well, like I said, we don't recommend any plumbers. We really can't do that. But we do know that there are certain, there are some businesses out there that are franchises that use out-of-county, out-of-area plumbers. And they just use those plumbers wherever they go, wherever they have one of their franchises. And then we have several that went to local plumbers. And we really can't say, "Go to that one or go to that one," because it's really not our place.
I would like to make note that here in this letter that we received, that was sent in, that was against the elimination of grease traps and interceptors. It was sent to us via Katrina Dorsey. It was sent to her. There was a note here that says, "Well, I doubt the city council has jurisdiction over the California plumbing code or state and federal wastewater discharge regulations or statutes." I will leave that to others. But I've heard that comment within the wastewater division that maybe the city council is, is not, can't overstep or supersede or and do anything about this problem. And I don't think that's why we're here, to overstep and supersede. We're here to make sure that we work with it. So, that little comment was a little bit taken. If it's going through anybody in wastewater or something where they're thinking council's just sitting here and you guys can override us, or someone's going to override us, I don't think that's the right approach.
Well, you definitely have the ability and the wherewithal to make changes to our city ordinance. But one of the things that was done by the council back in 2014 was do, it was either an adjustment to ordinance or an adjustment elsewhere that provides for interceptors. And I say that because the state code, where a grease trap is required, it's a grease trap. It's in the ground, in the lateral, outside the building. Interceptors can be under the sinks and are much less labor-intensive to put in. But that's an accommodation that the city council has already made to allow for a lesser implementation of the code that still is allowed by our NP, our permit with the Water Board.
No, thank you. And I just wanted to make one comment. Thank you for noting that the past is something we can't fix. But the plumbing code and the ordinance that's in effect has been in effect since 1963. So, we get to this point. So, there was definitely holes in the bucket to get to this point and not have compliance.
And I did talk to the building official, and he reminded me that the plumbing code and all the building codes have been adopted by the city at one point in time or another. So, it's something that the city's adopted. I'm just saying that because that's how that process typically works. It doesn't always work that way, but that's how we are right now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, just for a point of clarification, this item is for presentation and discussion only. We're not out here trying to change...
I was going to mention that at the very beginning, that this is really just an informational item. There's no action right now.
The premise I brought about, I brought it up because I had quite a few contacts with people very concerned. And again, my questions, again, are about the level of interpretation on what it has in here. And again, without, when people didn't realize that there was an appeals process. And so, that's what I'm trying to do here, is to get to that level. But, you know, you mentioned some of the installations of the very inexpensive components of interceptors. But interceptors go up to the, you know, tens of thousands of dollars requirements go.
The in-ground grease traps are typically $10,000, some in that range, yes.
So, there's a significant level in between. I mean, and I appreciate...
There are, during this, I didn't mean to cut you off, but in the 28, there's at least one that is actually putting a trap in, because it's based on their volume and discharge that was required, that was the level that was required. And it's being put in, so.
And an interceptor in the right place is a great tool. I do not disagree with the installation of them. And again, my discussion and concern is about the level of interpretation on what is a grease-laden component and what is considered to be excessive. And I've supported the wastewater, when wastewater's come by and say, "Hey, look", and I go to a tenant and say, "Hey, look", you know, because they have the finding of fact that shows the lines are plugging up and somebody doesn't know how to, in this case, they're not servicing the interceptor correctly. Or a lot of times, it's installed incorrectly, you know, something's upside down or backwards.
Or it's not being serviced on a periodic basis like it's supposed to be. And that's why I brought up the fact that we've had an inconsistent, we've had a vacancy in that division. So, as part of the requirement, you have to keep track of when you clean it out, when you put the whatever is into the container that's taken out by the environmental group that takes it away, which is free, by the way. Those records have to be kept. And for those that are letting it overflow, that's something that can be identified once we have a consistent process in place where we don't have gaps in our position. And to point out to one of your points, since we are in discussions with the State Board about our new next permit, there's no reason why we can't talk to them about those, at least the new ones that would be coming in, if there's any new tenants, tenant improvements are being done, say for a tasting room that's adding a small amount of food preparation. Find out if that, find out if we have that flexibility at the state level where they won't penalize us if that one is something we don't impose. So, that, and again, that's what I'm trying to make sure, is that we don't do something and then to find out we weren't supposed to do that, and they fine us until we stop doing that. So, and we can find, we can look and see if there's any kind of latitude we can do on the very lower end of the scale.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say that ultimately, it is up to the business owner to be in compliance, and that is their responsibility, as well as to maintain a system of that nature. But I think that it's still our responsibility as a city to be able to be consistent. So, if we have one person saying kudos about how they were serviced or their approach, that's wonderful. And I applaud, you know, the city and the employees that take that approach. But let's be consistent with everyone, so that nobody feels like they're... And again, we're talking about two or three businesses that so far have not been, have not come into compliance from the number that were actually done. So, it seems to me like it's not a major issue. But I think that it could go a lot smoother and a lot better with the approach. And again, ultimately, I do understand that the responsibility does fall on the business. But as a city, you know, if we could help to educate them and help to give them those resources, it would be better.
Thank you. Mr. Mosby and I had a brief conversation yesterday. And you mentioned apartments today. And I just want to make it clear that while owning an apartment building is a commercial operation, the individual units are non-commercial. So, in our SSMP, it talks about commercial operations. It doesn't talk about non-commercial, which is apartments, homes, things like that. So, it's only applicable, right now, it's only applicable to businesses. But there was an instance, and this was brought up to my attention yesterday or day, that there was an instance where we had gotten, as mentioned in the staff report, a factor that we could identify had come out of an apartment building. So, we don't have the enforcement ability on that like we do with a fast-food operation, for instance. But what they did do, and I'm not sure how long ago this was, but what they did do is they went to the property, tagged all the doors with informational information to let the tenants know what was going on. And since that time, they haven't had a recurrence of that issue. So, it's something that, there's ability for us to do outreach to homeowners and to apartment dwellers because of the same issues. I live in a house in town that's roughly 30 years old. And as I mentioned before, the pipes are kind of like arteries. I'm sure that over the 30 years my house has been there, it's probably gotten some grease buildup. But residences are not targeted by the state law. It just targets, just identifies food establishments in this particular case. And the reason is, how many meals do you make at home every day? You don't make 30 or 40 meals every day, possibly, where you do in a restaurant. So, unless you have a very, very big family.
Thank you. I'll now open it for public comment.
Could I have one quick question, Mr. Wilkie? On cottage food permits, are we requiring that? Because that's kind of a commercial component.
So, there are home occupancies that have food preparation in their house. So, that's, in speaking with the building division, that's a commercial operation. So, that would be subject to that jurisdiction, yeah.
Any more questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open up for public comment. Seeing none, I'll open up for public comment.
John Lynn Lompoke resident. You know, I, I hate it when people don't play by the rules. I think you all know that about me. And so, in the handout I'm giving you, there's the rule in the state plumbing code that describes at what point you have to put in a grease interceptor. And then, there's the rule within the city of Lompoke Municipal Code, Section 13, which deals with wastewater, which describes the process that has to occur if the city determines that you have a violation with regard to a grease intercept, and the need for a grease interceptor. So, the state plumbing code basically says, if you're plugging up the line, or you're impacting the plant operations, then you would be required to have an interceptor. And by the way, this plumbing code allows both interceptors above and below ground. The city code says, we have to determine that you're impacting our system. And if I were the person, which is the utility director, I would look at state law and see what that impact was, because it's not defined in our code and it probably should be. And then, our code requires that the utility director send a notice to the business in question that they're in violation of our Lompoke Municipal Code. And although it does not require that the individual business be notified of the appeals process, it would seem reasonable that they would be made aware of that. And the appeals process is, first, they can appeal the utility director's decision to provide additional information and go, "Hey, no, this is wrong. I'm not, I'm not damaging this sewer system." And the next step, if they were unsatisfied, would be to come to this council. So, attached to the very back is a sample of the letter that went out to the various establishments. And you'll find on the last page where they're threatened with a whole litany of fines. And I'm sure that every one of those are true. What's not there is the fact that they can, they have the ability to file an appeal. And I'd like you to put yourself in the position of that business for a moment, when someone from the city says, comes in and says, "We're going to fine you thousands of dollars if you don't do this." I suspect you would probably want to be compliant too, to avoid those thousands of dollars in fines, not realizing that, number one, you probably weren't violating it in the first place, and number two, that you had an appeal that you could file. So, that favorite slippery slope of Joe Panoni. Today, we're after these restaurants who many have operated for 10, 20, 30 years and have never plugged a line. I talked to a couple of plumbers about it. Next, we're going to have a chat with wineries and they're going to put these all in. Then, I imagine it'll be churches, home food users. There's the slippery slope. Thank you. Sorry for the extra minute.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public.
Hi, my name's Greg Gideon. Lived in Lompoke for 50 years. I get a little nervous talking in front of people, so excuse me if my voice cracks a little bit, okay? I am currently embroiled in the middle of this problem with restaurants at Flower Valley Plaza, okay? Restaurant's been operating there for 20-something years. The building owner, I represent the building owner in this matter. Three years ago, we replaced a sewer line from a particular restaurant that the grease and everything that they're dumping down this destroyed the line. Cast iron, lifespan of 50 years max without grease. This building is 40 years old, cost the building owners $20,000 for the fix. And we were preemptive in designing this to keep this restaurant open. Two months after we finished this project, their system failed because of the grease. They were closed for two months, cost them all kinds of money inside besides the building owner's 20 grand. Okay, right now, in the other building on this property, we have three restaurants that have been causing problems for 20-plus years, okay? The sewer line in there, we have to snake that out every two, three months because the amount of grease and whatever else gets shoved down this line because there's no grease interceptors, okay? Simple grease interceptor underneath a sink, minimum cost, less than $1,000, and that would save the building owner's sewer system. Right now, that sewer system is on the verge of collapse. It could take one more snake up that line and it breaks. At that point, that whole building is shut down, all the tenants are out for two months until we replace that whole line through the building. Remember, we got to go through three suites, three suites, three bathrooms, replace all the plumbing, go outside with it, put a grease interceptor in, and run that another 100 feet down to the main line. $100,000. Plus, all the tenants are out for two months. Everybody loses their job. Huge problem because of grease, okay? I can understand a little cost with these business owners, but, or for the businesses, but for the property owner, this is huge. And the people I represent are very upset with everything right now. We've been trying to get the one business to put a grease trap in for years, and it took me to call the health department and turn him in because we could not get a response on a water leak for three weeks, damaging a separate unit next door, okay? Took me to do that, to get action from anybody, to even the tenants, to do something, because they refused to do it. Why? And now, the building's suffering because of that. Okay?
Any more public comments? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment. Given this was presentation, there's no decision to be made on this. I do want to say thank you to all of those businesses that did respond and are coming up to code and making those investments. A thank you to staff for the lessons learned, and hopefully, the next time we approach on rectifying these situations, it will be a better communication process and more transparent. And, and I think every time we do this, it's a, a learning opportunity. So, thank you to those businesses who have complied. Councilmember Starbuck may return to the dais.
I just wanted to say something real quick, is that, you know, in dealing with the wastewater staff, I've had nothing but excellent rapport with them and opportunity. They've always done a great job. I know they've got a, a dirty business to deal with and, and, you know, always appreciate what they do. I, I kind of was hoping, I kind of thought we'd have a picture of one of these fat bergs up here and you see what I'm floating down, but, you know. And, yeah, they've always been good and, and have represented the finding of fact in my eyes, and that's, you know, fully support what you guys are moving here. And I, and I know with what Mr. Wilkie says, we'll, we'll make sure we reach out and be as transparent as possible. Thank you.
I appreciate that statement about my new staff. I see that in them as well. So, I appreciate that comment about their dedication to their job. Thank you.
Item number eight, council discussion of financial assistance to persons affected by the federal government continued shutdown. That shutdown is nonexistent at the moment, but if staff has anything to report.
We had a few people that actively asked us about it, but the shutdown was over, so we had no people that really utilized the waiver, so.
Any other questions by staff? Any public comment? Councilmember Mosby?
Don't want to jinx this, but if this happens again, we're prepared, right?
Yeah. Our staff report ready.
Okay.
I know Councilmember Vega was talking, I was like, "Oh, my gosh. I hope it doesn't all come to fruition."
I don't want to, I don't want to jinx anything.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, we will close it. Item number nine, discussion of reinstating the council's ad hoc committee regarding the San Yen Az Band of Chumash Indians, selection of city council members to serve on that ad hoc committee requested by Councilmember Vega. Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, thank you. Previously, we had an ad hoc committee that was meant to build relationships with the Chumash Casino and it, and to benefit Lompoke. It seems like we should reinstate this. Previously, I was on the ad hoc committee with the previous mayor, and I'd like to reinstate this and also note that, I'd also like to be on the committee if possible, but I'd like it to come up again so we can reinstate that, the ad hoc committee, so we can build that relationship again with the Chumash. I think it'd be beneficial to Lompoke.
And I do believe that it was actually the, not just the casino, but that the relationship with the tribe, given its long history in the community, both with tribal residents as well as the casino's employees being quite a few residents.
That's correct. The, the Chumash Casino and the Chumash Tribe has stated that 37% of their employees are employed at the casino. I think it's, it's imperative that Lompoke hang, grab onto that and build that relationship. I think it'd be beneficial for our global success.
Okay. Any discussion by council regarding maintaining this, reinstating it, and membership? Okay, seeing none, I'll, oh, Councilmember Starbuck.
Rather than it be an ad hoc, because an ad hoc usually assimilates that it's going to be a temporary thing and a report back to council, it seems as though if we were going to do that, we would go ahead and put it on our normal list here of council committee internal appointments, take it from ad hoc to actually including it.
Legal counsel regarding that.
That'd be fine to do. I was thinking in my head, if it's not going to be a temporary committee, if it's going to be a permanent standing committee, that it also will need to comply with the Brown Act if the council is creating it. So, there's that as well. But yes, you can put it on the list of permanent committees that you have.
We would probably need to consult with the tribe as well regarding whether or not they wanted it to become a standing meeting and a public notice, or whether they would like it to continue as an ad hoc that randomly met when there was a need, given they're the other partnership potentially.
That's certainly something you can do if you like, yes. I think that even if it did not meet on a set schedule, if it was a permanent, it could still be a permanent standing committee even if it did not meet on a set regular schedule.
Okay.
But if you'd like to consult with them first, then yes, we can do that.
That would be my recommendation, given they're not here to participate in, in the discussion. I would, I would rather us recommend that we have a standing committee and that it be with the Chumash and get their buy-in with it, given we're proposing to re-initiate with them without knowing for sure that they would like to have that ongoing discussion. Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to just note that we should reinstate the ad hoc to begin with and to start with, because I believe the, each one of the cities, which is built in Solvang and all those other communities around there, also have ad hocs that are meeting on a regular basis with the Chumash as per. So, I'd like to not leave it in, in limbo, okay? So, I'd like to insta, reinstate this, the way it sits, if we choose to have a committee or if we choose that the Chumash wants to have that commitment, we're not sure that they want to, because I can tell you, the structure between the other cities is just ad hoc and they meet as necessary to build their relationships. So, that's what I would propose.
Okay. So, the proposal is that we start with an ad hoc and investigate the Chumash tribe being willing to meet with us, and then come back with a recommendation of that becoming a permanent standing committee to meet our requirements with the Brown Act. Okay. Currently, it has been proposed that you would like to be a member. I would also like to continue participating as the mayor, if there are any discussion regarding what the membership would look like. Seeing none, we will open it to the public for comment, and then after that, bring it back for a discussion and vote. So, open for public comment. Seeing none, I will close that, and I will put forward councilmember's motion, councilmember Vega's motion, and entertain a second.
I'll second.
You made the motion.
I'll still second.
Councilmember Cordova?
I just have a quick question. So, as in ad hoc committee, you would still, if you had more than two people, you would still be potentially in violation of the Brown Act, correct? So, you would, really wouldn't have more than two people that could serve on this ad hoc?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
One more question, if I could, you know. Is it possible to have an alternate also in the, in the absence of a, I think that's probably where this question is leading. Is it possible to have an alternate that, in the case that someone can't make a standing meeting, we have someone to represent us without violation of the Brown Act?
Yes, you can have an alternate as long as they don't attend.
So, since I made the motion, maybe I can remake the motion and say that we'd also like to have an, an alternate if someone's interested, and move forward like that, if I could.
Yes, you can. We still need a second for it. Councilmember Cordova?
I would second that as long as I could be the alternate.
She can be the alternate.
Can she second it, or should I second it?
No, she seconded your motion. We are good.
Just kidding.
All right. Councilmember Mosby?
So, we're, can you help me out with the motion here, what you're doing? Because this item here right now is for discussion, so you're, you're making a motion to bring this back to finalize up what you wanted to move forward with, correct?
Councilmember Mosby, I don't think it was ever disbanded. You know, what it was, was it was a continuing ad hoc committee that was previously with the mayor. We had only met once, but I just think that it's so beneficial that we should keep this open and the relationships, ships moving forward with the Chumash. I don't think we actually vetted that.
I just want to be clear, to clarify here, that even though the agenda says discussion, the, the item is really to reinstate the ad hoc committee and to decide who is going to serve on the ad hoc committee.
Okay, just want to make sure we had a notice so we could make action.
It's fine. The word discussion doesn't prevent us from doing it.
Great point, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So, are we moving forward or what?
Yes, we got clarification from.
Okay, thank you.
Council that we can move forward. All right, we'll try this one more time. Are there any further discussions on this? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take them. And that passes 5-0. City clerk, do we have any written communications? Oh, yes.
I'm not sure if we officially chose who's going to serve on the ad hoc committee. Did we do that?
Yes.
We did? Okay. Thank you.
It was Councilmember Vega and myself with Councilmember Cordova as alternate. That was all wrapped into that very complex, yet not complex, motion. Okay, back to written communications.
Nothing more than you've already received.
Okay, thank you. We will have oral communications at two minutes. If there's additional comments on any city matter that you would like to speak to this evening, please step forward to do so. Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications and start with council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby?
The, there was a comment made earlier about supporting public safety. I think it's important that we put out there that, that we did go deep into the budget with cumulatively in two years, a 9% raise on our police force. And considering the new F-step that came forward with the fire, worked out to about 11% raise. So, we dig deep to, to help offset some of those concerns that they had. In talking of some of the issues that, that have drawn up in our community, in talking with the captains, there are options that are out there. One of them, if, if maybe I could make this as a council request, that it come back for discussion of possible action. And there's a joint venture going along with private people that have their camera systems and PD, both in Santa Maria and I was told in San Luis Obispo. So, it enhances the ability for PD to piggyback on, on this via the net, so they can, without a lot of cost, can get them to a position, and if, you know, hotspots or something, they can see that. So, maybe the, the staff could come back with something like, you know, a discussion with possible action to, to help enhance, to bring this forward in our community as well. And it would be, as a council request, two other people that want to come along with that, to have that brought forward. I believe that'd help our, our public safety component significantly.
I will second the request, and yes, the San Luis Obispo city does have a request to any businesses willing to share crime videos in similar locations. So, I will give you a second.
I'll give you a third.
And there's your third.
Okay. The other component, I know that the city manager already has this opportunity already, can enter into contracts up to 100 grand without necessarily bringing it forward to us. But we, yeah, I've brought this up a number of times, that we are missing out on grant opportunities. Santa Maria's got not one, but two fire stations done with FEMA grants and a fire truck, majority of the paid for by FEMA grants. And I brought this up maybe three years ago, that we started initiating this grant process, and I know we're kind of down on a number of people and opportunities for moving forward with these grants. But not only that, there's Prop 68 grants, which is a deferred maintenance for parks grants. We could qualify for up to $8 million in funding to help with our park component. I think that $1.4 billion in the state, we're a community that can get some of this funding, whether we ask. I know the city manager's willing, and we don't necessarily have to make this as a council request, but to, to help him come along in the support of the council, that we support him in whether we get creative, going out and finding contractors that'll work, or bring in another staff or directing staff. Prop 68 grants, they have to come forward this next spring. I'd hate to see us miss out on this. Huge opportunities for us. County parks, which I'm a commissioner for, we're moving forward currently, right now, there's, we have over $10 million worth of grants that are working for in county parks to help make them better. We're looking forward, and maybe an opportunity working forward with the county as well, in some of our parks that we own that are in the county. But guess what I'm looking for is just like, you know, you guys get behind it, support it, when you see things that are about grants. So I mean, if, could get, again, I mentioned the FEMA grants. There's also Prop 64 grant opportunities that, not quite sure how they're going to play out, but it's been mentioned that we could qualify for public safety grants of maybe a half a million to a million dollars a year. And many times, you have to have your place and your ducks in a row, or you might miss the cycle. It might be a year, it might be two years, it might be four years before you can get back in. So it's important that we work on this. I know city manager had a...
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, sometimes city governments, or government in general, is slow and whatnot. This would be, I think, a way to move more quickly rather than to find a grant, come back to council, explain the grant, can we go forward with it? Because in the end of the, the end of the day, we can't, as staff, we can't accept a grant if we're awarded. It'd have to come back to the council. But if we had an ability to just move a little more quickly, that might help get some of these grants that are out there.
I guess that's what I'm asking, if I got some other support that we, you know, say, hey, let's go fishing, because there's a lot of grant funds. The city attorney?
If you're asking for the item to come back so that council can decide what they would like to do on that issue, then you can make that council request. But I don't want the council to be making a decision on something right now that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So I can put it, I can bring that back.
All right. So, if I can get two others to come with me that...
Yeah, I'll give you a second.
I'll give you the third.
She's giving you a third, but I'd also like us to, since we're just discussing it, maybe we can, I'm not sure if it's competitive, these grants, or between cities, like the city of Santa Maria, who already has experience in them. Not sure if it's, if Santa Maria wins, we lose. Not sure if they would offer some assistance or some sort of guidance out there, if we did an outreach to whoever's filing for those grants in Santa Maria. Education is key. Maybe if it's not a competition, maybe someone would mind sharing some of their expertise and experience with us.
And I think that could come back, again, for discussion and possible action. Okay? And the other thing, there was a mention about personnel opportunities within the city, and I know that we have a personnel handbook, and we discussed earlier that that's going to be migrating forward and processed forward. But there is a component, and to the lady who made the comment earlier, if you would look at our personnel handbook in that section in there, but there are strict clauses in there about not allowing discrimination in there. So I think it's very important that you look at that component, and as that book comes forward, I know it's, it's going to be a little while, but it's coming, will be in front of us here eventually. And, let's see, I also represented the city of Lompoc for the past Santa Barbara County Association of Governor Meeting, as well as the Air Pollution Control District Meeting, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Ranger Christina, who stepped up massively with the gentleman who was in distress out at River Park, and she covered him and got him to the position so he could get his assistance. But I just wanted to publicly acknowledge her going above and beyond in that component. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
Wow, I thought you were having your own meeting over there, Jim. So, what I'd like to bring up is a council request, but first of all, I'd like to put a shout out and a thanks to Jack, Mr. Jack Rodenhy, who's been on the Planning Commission for over 18 years and done an exemplary job. So I'd like to thank him for all his dedication and all the years that he's been here. We did make a change out tonight, and I think it's offering another person an opportunity to make a difference here in Lompoc. And thank you, Jack. I really appreciate all your help. And then, the other part of it is, that I'd like to do as a council request, and maybe just as a note, I did another tour today of Denmat with some other people that were curious. So I made the appointment, went over there, they were just amazed. The first thing that I saw right outside their lobby window was a tent and a bicycle right outside there, in the field there. They're extremely concerned, so I know that we're working on something, Mr. Troop, okay? So I think that we need to bring back something that will allow us, with the alternatives of the safe parking program, maybe we're waiting because of staff, or maybe because you need somebody to put together. I get it. But it sounds like there's really a buildup there. And I did take a picture of it, and I told them, hey, I would bring it up. So they do have an issue there with the Cordoba Drive right there. So noted. Number two, I'd like to bring up an ask staff or a council request. We have the Kidney Dialysis Center that has some sort of, we're taking a look at their process, and I'd like staff to come back with anything that the state has mandated that offers any kind of exemptions or leeway for a medical facility, aside from the fact that we're currently negotiating for a permit. But I'd like us to do our homework on this end, to find out what the state has mandated and what they approved. It's not currently in our ordinance, but it's nice to know what we have as far as any leeway within that ordinance. So that's my council request.
I'll second.
Real quick, the March 5th meeting is the Safe Parking Pilot Program, and we've got admin fines for any sewer violations listed as future, which could be part of that.
Was that a third, or? Right. But were you giving a third to the council request, the councilmember Vega, or were you just making a statement on the...
I'll go ahead and give a third on the Dialysis Center. We've already got the Safe Parking Program.
Let me, real quick, is because we are losing another person that was the key person on the Safe Parking, I'll have to revisit to make sure that that's able to come forward or not, because they're, they're actually leaving this month.
If I could, um...
Councilmember Vega, you did get your third.
Yeah, I have one more question for Mr. Troop, if I could. Mr. Troop, implementation of the Safe Parking Program is just having something on the books. Is that not correct, or does it have to actually have funding and be implemented for us to move forward with any kind of parking ordinance or any kind of, what we're trying to do is trying to relieve the streets of some of the people without registration or that are impacting another business.
So it's essentially, it's a fairly decent ordinance in size, but the gist of it is finding a place that the people that are camping in cars, trucks, motorhomes, whatever, where they can go at night for whatever the period of time is, that's where we're looking to find, because we have to then allow them. We can't just tow the vehicle and move them. We have to be able to say, here's a spot for you to go to. We don't have a spot that has been agreed upon yet, so we're working on that. That was what the, March 5th was to come back with some different options that were, some were new, some were old, also some of the costs related to that, because there is the thought you can provide a spot, and that's it, and then sort of let helter-skelter go if you want, and hope that it survives. Or you can have a spot with security. We also need somebody to do it properly that comes from one of the social services that comes to try and get these people, because they don't get to do it forever. The idea with Safe Parking is they go into the Safe Parking, and as they're in there, they're working towards bettering their, lifestyle for back, better word, to get out of having to live in a car. And so they have to go through the processes. There are rules that also must be followed during that Safe Parking. So it, it limits whatever liability might be out there and people doing things.
Mr. Troop, I went by there today, and you know, during the daytime, Cordoba Drive was actually vacant, and they had all moved over to Aviation Drive. So timing is of the essence also, okay? So you know, if you're saying, if you're thinking they're just sitting there all the time, they're not.
Well, actually, the reason that's clear is the police went out and have been doing an extremely diligent amount of work, just like Officer Maui went out there in the riverbed. That's what his goal was this last week or two, was he met with every single one and said, you can't stay here. And in those, those are my words, but, and they took him to heart, because he is, in fact, I just, I just had a message from Dave Castro, the CEO, and he had nothing but kudos to talk about Officer Maui and his interaction with the people that are living there, and his ability to talk to them. And what, well, the end result is, there was nobody on Cordoba at this point, so.
Yeah, today was vacant, and he was, they were wowed, because Officer Maui and his four-wheel drive, they, they thought they liked the car.
Yeah, oh yeah. So they are, it hasn't, and it was brought up at another meeting, the problem hasn't gone away. It's moved. You know, there's the ability, if it is vacant, to, you could do zone parking, because that was one of the questions, where are they going to go? Well, people have moved out of there in their own, under their own direction and stuff. They just, they listen to the police. So you could put a zone parking there, and that would fix that at the moment, but it, it still needs to be addressed for the longer term on having these individuals in a secure area.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just have a, are you asking me if I have any recommendations, or if I have a question? I have a question in regards to what councilmember Victor was talking about. So, we got a third on making sure that we bring it back then, in regards to the Cordoba Drive issue, correct?
So, it is coming back. It was to be agendized on March 5th, but because we're losing the staff member who was to present that, city manager is going to verify whether we can still present that information or not.
And if, how far along that's been, if it's, if it's far enough long, that's great. If we're still in the process of working, I then have to figure out who can then take over that project and continue it to move forward.
Because my comment to that question, based on the answer, was going to be that I do think there needs to be a sense of urgency. I think this is something that's been on our lap for a little while, and I think that we need to show Denmat, being one of the biggest employers in town, a sense of urgency that we can resolve this issue, or at least attempt to resolve this issue.
Thank you very much. And what, if we have another alternative to not putting in with the Safe Parking Program, as you mentioned, Jim, I think it's imperative right now. They, they have some extra space there. They're looking for a build-out right now. They're going to do an expansion. They've actually decided to put on a second shift and add up to 22 more employees. I did ask them what they're, if they're planning on staying. They said they would love to, but the eyesore is out the windows. So on that one street, Cordoba Drive, if we could focus, maybe it doesn't take the Safe Parking Program. I can tell you, it was totally vacant today.
I can do, because I don't want to get in trouble by our city attorney.
I'm sorry, are we talking too much, Jeff?
But I can bring back the previous staff report that talked about zone parking, now that that one has been cleared out under their own power, and discuss that for that street. And that was the zone parking that we discussed a couple months ago. And then continue also with, because that one's all done. We could just bring it back. The other one, the Safe Parking, I just need to see how far along we are on that.
So, Councilman Cordova made a sort of a suggestion in a motion. Can she turn that into a council request, or was that already done, so we can get a second and a third to move forward, probably expediting whatever we need to do with Cordoba Drive and maybe looking to zone parking?
If we want to have a council recommendation request for the Safe Parking, that's already coming. If we want to have another council request to bring back the Zone Parking.
I think that would be prudent. I think that's exactly when I'll let her lead the way, since she made that suggestion.
I would definitely make that recommendation.
I'll give her a second.
I'll give her a third.
That's how we get things done.
I would advise that next time, we refrain from that much discussion on a topic that is not agendized.
Okay, thanks.
Given the...
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes.
Could we get a clarification on the actual request? Is it just for spot parking zone on Cordoba, or Aviation as well?
I'm, I'll leave it up to...
I would say we might as well do both.
Any change in the second and third support of that?
Okay.
Now, Ms. Cordova, do you have any other meeting reports, staff reports, or council requests?
Okay. So, I did attempt, yes.
Mayor Osborne?
Yes.
Sorry for interrupting.
Council, uh, sorry, Mr. Brulki. Sorry, Mr. Brulki.
I'd be remiss of my new duties as the utility director. Councilmember Mosby reiterated the item about the shortage and the staffing for police. Now that I represent the utilities, I just want to make you aware, if you're not already aware, that just like the rest of America, we have several vacancies because of retirements. So, the safe, secure delivery of electric, water, and wastewater are provided by our employees as well. We've lost retirements just in the last few weeks in electric. The, we had a power outage over the weekend where staff was strained to get the power back on, and they were able to do it. But if we have passages of time, will just leave us more and more vulnerable to retirement. So, I understand that there is a difference between public safety and the utilities, but we all have issues with retention of employees, and that does affect the utilities, even though they're a lot more invisible than some of the items in the general fund. I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Okay. So that being said, there are jobs available. Check in with the city about jobs availability. The, A, I just want to say thank you to the city staff this past weekend, the electoral department, the Parks and Rec Department, the Trees and Urban Forestry, Public Safety, for the quick response, given what we had going on in our own community. I was really amazed at the response, and I just wanted our community to be aware of how quickly we responded and took care of ourselves, given everything else the rest of the communities around us were dealing with. And the pride of having our own electrical department that was able to get our electricity back on very quickly and wasn't waiting on SoCal Edison or PG&E is one of those benefits of having our own electrical company. Some reminders, the, again, the city's priority survey is online till February 22nd, so go to our homepage and you can take it there. It's important that we hear from you and as many of you as possible, because we are in a difficult budget discussion. So that will play a great role, followed by that goal-setting workshop on March 9th, so be in attendance at that. There are some really interesting things going on in this month. There is a speech contest that will be here in City Hall this coming Friday from 4:00 to 6:00. The American Association of University Women is sponsoring it. It is high school students speaking on the topic of violence in our schools. So we encourage you to come out and be supportive of these students, witness their presentations, and they are in competition for not only a local scholarship win, but the top winner goes on to compete at the state level. So, it's really important that they get a physical presence in this room to watch them make their speeches as part of the requirement. The library is also doing some great youth programs with the Anti-Valentine Party on this Friday from 4:30 to 6:30, as well as the youth program at Parks and Rec is doing a job sinking 101 for teens on the 21st of February, and that's from 9:00 to 1:00. And they'll teach you how to do resumes and do interviews. So, for anyone who has kids out there that you want to get a summer job, take advantage of these programs that the city is putting on. I attended as representation for the city, the Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley Breakfast, as well as MLK Day Celebration on the 21st. I participated in the point-in-time count, which was a huge turnout for us. I think it was really important that we get accurate count. One of the new counts we were doing this time was how many RVs and cars were parked in our community, because that is a growing burden on the homeless population that hasn't been identified and well-counted. So, it was really important to get out there and do that, and it was just on spying to watch the number of people willing to get up at 4:00 AM and start walking around in the cold and the cold. the cold and the wet at 5:00 AM and talk to people in need. I also attended the Peace Prize Ceremony, and I want to congratulate the winner. He is, I just went blank on his name. Yes, Mr. McClellan. He is a longtime volunteer in our community, both as a chaplain for our Public Safety Department, as well as a volunteer for the Red Cross. So he very well deserved that, so congratulations to him. And then I also judged the American Legion's Constitutional Speech Contest, which was really impressive to watch, the contestants speak for eight minutes without a script on the Constitution. So again, this past weekend was proof that our community really comes together when it's under duress, that it was really important that we address the riverbed, given the flow that happened in it this weekend. And a thank you again to all the staff. We will adjourn the Long Poak City Council meeting to the regular meeting at 6:30 PM on February 19th, 2019.